Work for our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to Brittany's Flowers and Gifts. We appreciate all the business. We'd like to encourage you to come by and get a fresh bouquet or a gift. And we once again, we thank you for all your business here at Brittany's Florists, 921-0774.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council Meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Hi, I'm Dr. Wayne Cobb Jr. here at Hamilton Vision and Eye Care, and this is Dr. Grant Fowler. And we've been in business here in Hamilton since 1995. It's been a while, so we appreciate everyone that's come to see us. And if you have any eye care needs, please feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. And we just wanted to advise the public of where we're standing, where we were 15 years ago, and where we are now. When we purchased this funeral home, we were doing two or three funerals a year. Now we're doing 80 funerals a year. And we are so excited about the accomplishments that we've made. One of the things that we continually get into is families coming out here and talking about pre-needs and saying, well, we have done something at another funeral home, or we've done this, and it wasn't like you're doing here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone about a pre-need. Even monies that are spent on a pre-need cannot come to the funeral home. They have to be into an insurance policy, or they have to go into a trust fund which is governed by the state. One of the things we'd like to ask people to do, if there is a question about your pre-need existence with another funeral home, regardless of where it might be, bring it out here to us. At no charge, no obligation to you whatsoever. We want to make sure that your family is covered in the very best possible way they can and do it in a legal manner so that your money, when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there. Glenda does an excellent job consulting with the families. If I need to be here, we will. Also, the same scenario in Russell, Alabama, Spry Memorial Chapel. But we are pleased to serve the public and we plan on serving for years to come.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith Furniture, or call us at 662-862-7412.
The 6 o'clock hour has arrived, and we're a little late for this meeting. It's supposed to be last night, but we had Labor Day holiday and city all closed down yesterday. So we're here on Tuesday night, the 6th, to have this council meeting. I appreciate everyone that's come this way to be a part. And we want to make a couple of comments before we get into the meeting tonight. For the citizens out there that may be thinking about fall, Buddy Hatch's Fall Fest is coming up late October, so be putting that on your calendar. We want to be here and promote it and also attend it because there's going to be new events, more events this year than before, and it's going to be hopefully bigger and better than ever before. The Chamber's doing a lot of hard work in preparation, and I think it's going to be very good. On a sad note tonight, we want to remember two of our own that have served our community so well. Businessman and former mayor Ray Harper passed away recently, and we grieve with his family tonight, along with James Dodd, who was our KFC man for so many years. Both these men had roots in other counties. They grew up in Ryan Walker County and Sam's in Winston County. But I assure you, no two men were more of Hamilton than these two men, and we're certainly going to miss them. And our hearts go out tonight to their families. Some of you men might want to make a comment about this. If you do, feel free to do so.
Both men did so much for our community, you know, from different things they were involved in throughout the community. And just like you said, our prayers and thoughts with both those families.
I agree with Simon, so especially that. James Dodd, he was one of the first people I remember as a kid being involved in, was it the JC's or CJ's? And the Quanis now is to the Christmas baskets. The Quanis had that up, and I took that over after he decided to get out. But, and Ray, it's one of the, he was a good mayor and one of the lot that we missed. Two minutes.
Both represented Hamilton very well, especially not being here, like you said. So I appreciate both of them. Me and Ray was good friends, and James always a big supporter of the schools. They recognized him at the ballgame the other night, and I thought that was a good thing for his family because he was Maggie, went to a lot of Wey games, all home that way. So with him and Bill Nighley, and Bill Nighley was another mayor that was a big supporter. We've lost several men that represented Hamilton very well in the last few years. They were two, as well as Mr. Nighley.
Before we move on to our agenda, we will pause just for a moment, have an invocation and our pledge that we always do, and then we'll move right into our meeting. So we'll stand together at this time. Father in heaven, we come to you, Lord, tonight, just thanking you that we have been given another day of life and that we can enjoy the beauty of this day. Father, we thank you for the fall and how it always tends to move us to a new season. Lord, we've had a hot summer, and we're going to be thankful for those cool evenings that we can enjoy and go out and support our favorite teams and be a part of the pleasures of the world. We never want to lose sight of you, Lord, and what you mean to us and to our community. And we certainly thank you, Lord, that you'll be in the meeting tonight, and you'll help us to conduct it in a way that will be pleasing to your side. Be with our local and national leaders, our state leaders, Lord, that they may make good decisions for our nation and our state. Help us, Lord, as we try to move forward and remain united in the front in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Our first item on the agenda tonight would be a recommendation to approve the minutes of the August 15th City Council Meeting. We have a motion and second.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Tyler made the motion. We'll need a second.
I'll second.
Matt made the second. All those in favor of approving our minutes, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item two is a recommendation to approve the accounts payable bills for August 2022. And those bills are the ones that are currently due, so we'd need a motion and a second to pay our bills.
I'll make a motion.
Scott Robertson made the motion. We'll need a second.
I'll second.
For a second, all those in favor of paying our August bills?
Mayor, I abstain online. I vote her.
We understand. Appreciate that. Thank you for the work you do for us, though.
I appreciate it.
Item three is the announcement of hiring two of our volunteer firemen's to become firefighter trainees for the Hamilton Fire Department. We'd like to announce tonight that Spencer AZ and Skylar Willingham will be the two candidates for those jobs, and they'll both be going to the academy. Is that correct, too?
That's correct.
At the same time?
Yes, sir.
And when is that?
The next March.
So they're working until next March?
Yep.
In kindergarten?
Yep.
And they've passed a portion of their test?
They had the kind of physical agility test that everybody has to pass so they can go to rookie school. Both of them have passed it.
I believe one or more of these young men had asked for a job prior to this.
Yes, sir. Both of them are active volunteers also.
We're going to, the crowd have them stepping up from their volunteer roles to full-time firemen as soon as we can get the training done.
Both of these to replace, is that right?
That's right. That is to replace.
Okay. Tim, are our volunteers pretty active, I guess?
We've got several on the road. Don't seem to be, we don't seem to be getting as many volunteers as we once did. The ones we got are very active in it. And we had a structured fire the morning, yesterday morning about 4:30. Had a good turnout, so that's a big help.
Yes, and we're able to put it out?
Yep, got to put it out. The dryer caught on fire.
That's a good report. We're always glad to extinguish those fires instead of having to stand back and let it burn.
Yep.
That's a, that's a job we take on. Sometimes it's dangerous around those fires. Recommended pay for Spencer and Skylar would be equal 1622 per hour for their positions as firefighter trainees at the entry level pay for our firemen. And I'd need a motion and a second to pay these young men.
I like a motion.
Ross made the motion. We'll need a second. Wade made the second. All of us in favor. Thank you. Item five is something we've been working with for a while, and we're going to recommend tonight that we convert to a two-week pay period with direct deposit, beginning with the September 17th through September 30th pay period. Receiving pay for those two weeks on October 7th. The employees will be paid by the direct deposit every two weeks and thereafter. We've had, I believe, it's five different ways that we've paid our employees when our accountant called the state and told them how we paid. So that surely can't be possible, the child are doing that. But we feel like this is the best time, or maybe the only time we'll have, to get this converted and get our payroll running smooth is when we give this bonus to our employees, what we voted to do out of the COVID recovery. We helped them through this two-week period, and that was the logic. I'm not wanting to do it right now. And we've been looking at this, a lot of the companies we've checked with and other cities are doing two-week pay periods. And it would fit us very well, and it's the ripe time for us to convert to make it work smoothly for our employees. So I'm recommending that tonight. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I've had multiple employees, you know, reach out to me. I just have one question to maybe answer, and Amy can answer. Is there any way like we could maybe give an option on whether or not they could go to direct deposit or state way, or would that be off the table? That's just a question I couldn't answer. So I plan.
I mean, we, we just kind of said we were going to do it. It'd be better if we, say, all were known. I mean, if we just all went to direct deposit or just gave them a check. I mean, it's just kind of split with, you know, you've got half that, or a lot of them that wanted and some that don't, so.
A couple of concerns about, a few of the employees are worried that they'll get more taxes out of their two-week check versus a single week. I've tried to put that to risk, but you guys told us that the calculation for how they get cut will end up being the same, and they'll get the same net check.
Yes. Yeah, it'd be, I mean, just be one week. I mean, is the, just add from one week to the next, it's what they get in front of them?
Because we would change them on the payroll system from weekly to bi-weekly.
Right, which will change.
So it's exactly the same.
Right. It'll change the tax tables when you do, when you change that.
I'm agreeing with that. So if you work more overtime one week than the other, basically the check will be the same if it's weekly or bi-weekly?
Right, right.
No matter how many overtime hours you give, you won't get cut more? Because that's been some concern.
No, because it, well, when you change that to the 80 hours instead of 40 hours, it changes your tax tables. So I went in there and figured it to make sure that nobody's was going to be less and.
Tim, how's your guys?
They're, they're all for it.
They are? Some departments are all kind of for it, and some are kind of all against it. It's just when things have been done a certain way forever, and it's difficult to change. You know, it's a transition, and we're asking employees to do something for the city that we were asking them to, instead of just, you know. I feel like we've been very fair to our employees, even doing the COVID check, which was an option that we had, we could do or not do. Normally, we'd probably done it in December, but trying to do it during this transition. I hope it'll help make things over for a week or two anyway. Because you're going to go a little bit without it. If you didn't do the COVID money, some of them are going on a couple of days' checks. Is that right?
Because we're going to have to change the pay period back to Friday. So with that one week, you know, they would get the prior weeks, you know, two days, and then their $1,000.
And normally on the draft, when you do that, you go straight, put your check straight to bank? Like, if it was that way, it usually hits on Thursday night, isn't it?
Well, I mean, not Friday morning it will be there. I'm not sure exactly, after midnight, Thursday night?
Yeah, yeah, I know it's always right at midnight for, wow.
And when you get it Friday morning, it should be there.
Yeah.
Mayor, you had any discussions with any?
I've, I've not had even one to approach me about it. Another department head, I've had one phone call today from an employee, and after we talked, he was fine with it. But as far as it working, I've had, I've been paid both ways in my work career, and the direct deposit will work, I'm sure of that. And it's going to make it lots better on my payroll department. Also, having to report the weekly retirement to the state. Angela has to leave her desk every week for a happy day or more to get that into the state, get it up to date and balanced. She'll have to do it every two weeks now. Still got to do the reports, but she's not out of her office for those hours, and she's missing now, and I think it'd be better on everybody concerned. And I think it'd work well for the employees if it was penalizing employees or something. I wouldn't do it. I think it'd be great to have money in the bank Friday morning, no questions asked. And it's not going to hurt them tax-wise, so I can't see the negatives in it.
I was in South today working and had to meet with the mayor over there on another job, and I asked him about his payroll, and there was solid red flag this evening. So, I mean, it is a kind of thing, and we're really probably behind in honestly, sort of obviously compared to. And also, when you reach retirement, that's the way it's going to be, you know, there's no choice.
Charles from Salm, that's for a tip. You're going to get one.
We did it several years ago. Booken Air? And those long folks hesitant about it. I think it's, everybody's, yeah, used to it. Some people just don't like change. Yeah.
We're seeing more businesses do this now than probably mine. You know, and I'd like to say it's not because, Amy and I don't want to do our job. You know, we want it as easy as possible. It's not that. But when you have five different payrolls, basically, that you're having to do every week, and every time a new person gets a hold of our retirement down there at the state, it blows their mind, and they're calling, y'all can't do that. You know, we've got to restructure it. We go to, you know, like, well, this is how we do payroll. This is how it's been doing. And they just cannot believe it, that that's how we send everything in.
Yeah, and I think that's some of the things maybe employees don't understand. It's not something y'all just dreamed of.
We've heard about a lot of people warning it, even new employees committed. Y'all do direct deposit? You know, like, younger generation, they, that's all they kind of know. I mean, Morgan, when she got paid the first time, didn't know what to do with a check. So, I mean, you know, a lot of people, that's, and we always have to tell them we don't offer direct deposits.
Well, you would find it better off.
I've had one time, and it was just, I think we want to do the challenge. That's the only reason I got.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion on this matter, and we'll need a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Those in favor of going to a two-week pay period with a direct deposit, please raise your hands. Item six is a recommendation to increase the annual budget of the Hamilton Chamber of Commerce to $29.99 per year for their continued promotion of various festivals and events held in the city of Hamilton, as well as ads, publicity, and improvement on the website. Current events promoted by the Chamber are Jerry Brown Arts Festival, National Day of Prayer, Shrimp Bowl, Miss Hamilton Pageant, Christmas Parade, Buddy Hatch's River Fall Festival, Hamilton Homeowners Christmas, Easter egg hunt, which I think is a new thing they're going to do, Cowboy Day, Glen Air Artist Visitation, and Back to School Bash, and Dinner on the First. Some of these are new things that they've added in, and they're going to need some money to promote these. So they've asked us to increase their budget to $29.99, and they fisted with us, gave us their logic of it, asked us to put it on the agenda for a vote. And so, council, I'm making this as a recommendation, and I'd like for us to vote on it tonight and decide whether we can increase the budget.
I'll make a motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a second. Those in favor of supporting our change, thank you very much. I think it's a worthy effort. I see the Chamber at work. They are doing more for us than they've ever done in the past, in my opinion. And I think they want to go further with it and do few events that help us to bring our community together even more. So I'm proud of this council that we supported them with the increase in our budget.
And I like the idea of the, I'm excited about the Dinner on the First. I think that is a great idea.
Yeah.
And I know it's been successful in a number of towns.
Anything else to, can I?
I'd like to suggest or ask if we can go to executive session just a little bit before adjournment. Has a new personnel. I don't think it takes this few minutes, but I wouldn't take long. The only thing I got, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to see something be added to the agenda tonight, and that would be for department heads to turn, to turn in their report. That could be an email, almost, but tell us what's going on in their department with these overtime hours. Just something we better understand. I understand there's emergencies. You know, there's nothing we can do about that. But we got to be good stewards of money, and I'd just like to be able to know what's going on while we're having overtime in these different departments. And like I said, I'd just like it to be, like, you just turn it into a section pay period and just to understand what's going on. And I'd like that to the agenda, so.
Any special thoughts you want to share with council on that matter?
I agree with Scott. Just to send a report to you. I agree. You know, if you have 10 hours overtime in water park and locker park, just let them know he can give it to us. We had extra hours, so at 2:30 in the morning or whatever, you know. Well, it's not simply just do an email. Maybe, you know, what about coming up here and just helping turn on the inside? I'd like at least email each one of us, and just, just so that we know. Kind of sample forward, as much as I can come up with.
You know, happens with that, Scott. How do you think, if I want to need to come, you think it needs to come to one of y'all, and you send it to everybody, or you want it sent directly to the council and myself? How do you make that up? Did I send it off?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, Scott's suggestion.
We got a motion. Can we have it under our agenda by a minute?
We need to vote some minutes.
I'll make a motion with Ben, that's him.
Okay. We got a motion to make an amendment to our agenda tonight.
I'll second that.
We got a second. Are those in favor of the amendment to our agenda? Okay. Now let's hear the motion that you're going to put up forward.
Yeah, you have to take some handouts.
Did talk to Andrea today. The cleaning is done. They did a fantastic job inside cleaning up the building. This is the Serprow people. She told me she would deliver the final drawings to me before the week's out for your revision. And it's been, she said she'd been terribly busy. Apologize for not getting it in, but she's made another promise to this day to get the plans in.
This is one of the first things we met on, this October, November is going to be 30 years, isn't it? We're all, and I got people asking me every day, what are we doing about the house? And I mean, all I can tell them is we're waiting on the architect.
Scott, where we been? You're telling the truth.
So. Heather makes me come to us and give us what the dates to empty is, and let's, let's start. Give it some work. I mean, it's in bad shape, and it's an isolate of our sheet.
Yeah, it is. You're exactly right.
We need to get back on that, on this conversation.
Yeah, we, let's go back, and we amended our agenda, but we'll leave that motion.
I'll make that motion, Scott's suggestion.
I'll make the motion, Scott's suggestion.
Scott makes her motion, we'll let him second it.
I'll make the motion. We start getting the report sent to the mayor every pay period of why we're having.
From the department heads.
And I'll say.
We had a motion and a second to get a report on overtime as to what it was worked, what the work was about. And is that correct? You want to know what the work was about, what it's done for, and under what?
Mal feathers and just to better understand what's going on in these departments.
Donald Sierak believes in you, though. All right, we got a motion for seconds now. Did we, did we mess with?
No, 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 I was, I was on the sun house. Go ahead.
Okay, everybody open for that? Okay, sorry. Okay.
Executive session.
You know, we got a motion.
I'll make a motion for executive session.
I'll say to the minister, he has to give me the care.
Those in favor of just continuing our current leading and going to executive session, but we'll come back here to finish.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith Furniture or call us at 662-862-7412.
Work for our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Buy is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, everybody. Like to welcome you to Brittany's Flowers and Gifts. We appreciate all the business. We'd like to encourage you to come by and get a fresh bouquet, a gift. And we, once again, we thank you for all your business here at Brittany's Florists, 921-0774.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, president and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6 o'clock PM.
Hi, I'm Dr. Wayne Cobb Jr. here at Hamilton Vision and Eye Care. And this is Dr. Grant Fowler. And we've been in business here in Hamilton since 1995. And it's been a while. So we appreciate everyone that's come to see us. And if you have any eye care needs, please feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. And we just wanted to advise the public of where we're standing, where we were 15 years ago, where we are now. When we purchased this funeral home, we were doing two or three funerals a year. Now we're doing 80 funerals a year. And we are so excited about the accomplishments that we've made. One of the things that we continually get into is families coming out here and talking about pre-needs and saying, well, we have done something at another funeral home. Or we've done this and it wasn't like you're doing here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone about a pre-need. Even monies that are spent on a pre-need cannot come to the funeral home. They have to be into an insurance policy or they have to go into a trust fund, which is governed by the state. One of the things we'd like to ask people to do if there is a question about your pre-need existence with another funeral home, regardless of where it might be, bring it out here to us at no charge, no obligation to you whatsoever. We want to make sure that your family is covered in the very best possible way they can and do it in a legal manner so that your money, when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there. Glenda does an excellent job consulting with the families. And if I need to be here, we will. Also, the same scenario in Russell, Alabama, Scribe Memorial Chapel. But we are pleased to serve the public and we plan on serving for years to come.